Good evening. I will now call this meeting to order. First order of business tonight is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the final agenda?
So moved.
Second?
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The motion carries. Our next order of business is to adopt the minutes from our August 20th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. We'll now move on to our discussion items. First discussion item tonight is item 3.1, Consider a Final Platte and Final PUD for Victoria South. This item does include a public hearing. I will now turn it over to City Planner Brian McCain for his staff presentation. I will then open the public hearing for those in the chambers this evening that wish to speak on this request.
Thank you, Chair and Plan Commissioners. Tonight, we have a proposed final platte and PUD, as you noted, for the first phase of Victoria South. The applicant for this application is Golden Valley Land Company. And then, as you are aware, we had the sketch platte process at the beginning of this year for this development. They presented two options at that meeting. They were notified to move forward with option B as a potential proposal, and they submitted a preliminary platte application back in May, which was approved by the City Council at their May 13th meeting. And as you all are aware as well, the final platte process is where we look at the final details for development and finalize a development agreement to move forward with the development. So that's the phase that we are at this evening. For the location and existing conditions, it's just south of the railroad, and the Marsh Hollow Development is also located on the west side of County Road 11. The current site conditions include vacant farms, farm fields, and removed farm structures with some wetlands on the west side of the site, and a few portions of trees to the north, central, and south of the area. A portion of the west Chaska Creek also runs through the northeast corner. So for this final platte, they did receive annexation approval as part of their preliminary platte approval, so it automatically has an agricultural zoning classification. They are proposing a PUD this evening with underlying R4 high-density residential. Part of this PUD is for the 70 units for the townhomes that they are proposing. For the entire site, it's just over 24 acres. The area that they're really focusing on here for these 70 townhomes is about 7.4 acres. That puts the density at about nine and a half unit per acre. You might remember that this area is guided between 12 and 36 units per acre. We did run this by the Metropolitan Council back through preliminary platte to verify that this wasn't going to require a comp plan amendment for phase development. They confirmed at that time that a comp plan amendment would not be required, so we don't expect one moving forward if they were to request a sewer extension permit. So for the second part of their application, the planned unit development or PUD, as you all know, the purpose is to allow innovative, creative, and flexible development. The process, the initial input is applied at sketch platte. Then the details are approved during the preliminary platte, and then at final platte we adopt the official ordinance rezoning the property to PUD. So just to reiterate some of the deviations proposed with this development, I have them on the screen for you here. They were also included in the report. A typical corridor for a public street is 120 feet. They're proposing 65 feet for the private street corridor in this area. They also have an apartment parking requirement of two spaces per unit with one of those being enclosed. Their parking comes out to about 1.9 spaces per unit, so a slight reduction in the number of enclosed stalls. The front setbacks for the townhomes and the clubhouse are proposed to be reduced down to 20 feet for each. And then for the patio side and rear setbacks, they're required five feet and 10 feet, but they're proposing zero feet for both. And for the townhome impervious, our code has it at 75%. They're proposing 95%. That and the patio reductions are fairly common for townhome developments. The lot typically only encompasses the building and any proposed patio improvements in the back. And then, our code also stipulates a maximum number of apartment units at 100. They are proposing 144 units at their preliminary platte. And then their landscape berms are typically required to have a three-to-one slope, but a two-to-one slope can be approved by the City Council. Moving on to the architecture, lighting, and signage renderings and proposed materials for the townhomes meet our requirements. You may recall that some of the units on the ends will be single-story living. They also did provide some lighting specifications at intersections. And for the apartment building, we have not received those, but those will be required with the site plan application. And they also have not provided sign renderings yet. Moving on to landscaping, they are required to have a minimum 25%. They're showing just about 52%, so they're well over that requirement. They need one tree and one shrub for every thousand feet of open space. They're also meeting that requirement. They need to have 40-foot buffers adjacent to County Road 11 for residential uses. They do have them on the plan. And as I noted in the last slide, they are proposing two-to-one unmaintained slopes for those berms, which is a deviation. And then for boulevard trees, they're required to have them every 35 to 45 feet. Some of the plans show spacing that does not meet the requirements of that. Some of them are shown to be about 100 feet or more apart. And then for foundation plantings, they're required around townhomes and the apartment building, which those renderings were not provided. For tree preservation, they're proposing 29% removal, which does require mitigation for that extra 9%, which results in about 47 three-inch replacement trees. Those will be filled in on the north adjacent to the railroad to act as an additional buffer. No berm is proposed with that buffer. For parking and pedestrian connections, townhomes are required two spaces with two of them enclosed for half the units and one enclosed for the other half. The renderings that I showed that they provided at preliminary platte seem to meet those parking requirements, and then the parking deviation for the apartment building that I talked about earlier. They are showing some trail connections along the Collector Road and along County Road 11 with future improvements. For park dedication, the calculation for 70 townhomes comes out to be 1.86 acres of land for dedication, or $196,000, or some blend of land and cash dedication. They're not proposing a park with this development, so cash fee is anticipated with some reductions to the trails along the Collector and the County Road. For access and streets, they're getting their access mainly from County Road 11 with a proposed three-quarter access. As I mentioned earlier, they also have a minimum 65-foot wide corridor for the private drives. And the County Road 11 improvements aren't anticipated until 2027, so the city has had some preliminary discussions with the developer about a potential agreement to conduct these improvements prior to the county's reconstruction schedule. For the site utilities, they are proposed to come from the Marsh Hollow Development to the north. Now, one of the conditions of the preliminary platte approval back in May stipulated that the well number six must be completed and permitted for pumping by the DNR prior to final platte approval to serve this development since it's outside of the current city boundaries. As Cara mentioned at the last meeting, there are some parts arriving this month for the well to complete the construction of it, but we still don't know when it will be permitted for pumping by the DNR, which could impact the construction schedule. Regarding the stormwater management, it's subject to the CCWMO rules with review by Cara. And then wetland impacts are also subject to their rules. Buffers should be platted as outlots, and the pond access must meet city standards. These were included in the case report. These are the preliminary platte requirements back from their approval in May. You can see a few of those items are still in process or have not been provided to us yet for approval. And then I also included some staff-proposed conditions for approval in case the Planning Commission does decide to recommend approval. You can add or remove any of these conditions as you see fit for your recommendation to the City Council. And with that, a public hearing is required for the ordinance rezoning it this evening. It was published in the Waconia Patriot on August 22nd and provided to residents within 350 feet of the development boundaries. It was also posted on the city's website, and a copy of it is on the monitor at City Hall. The Playing Commission should hold a public hearing prior to making a recommendation to the City Council. With that, I have a few sample motions for you on the screen this evening. The applicant is in the audience, and staff can stand for any questions as well.
Thank you, Brian. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening. My name's Matt Pavick, Civil Site Group. I am here to stand for any questions that you have. We concur with staff's report. Our final plans are consistent with the preliminary platte that was approved. There's a couple of outstanding technical items that we're still working with staff to resolve, but we're confident we can work with staff to do those things. The one question I had on the tree boulevard spacing, that was a comment that I had missed. Our intention is to meet that requirement with the 35-foot spacing along the Collector Road. This may be referring to spacing on the private drives, where we only have the ability to put it every so often, or we have space between the driveways. So it could have something to do with that. I don't know if Brian wants to clarify that comment, but we do meet it on the public road. So other than that, we are, like I said, confident we can work through any other technical items with staff as we proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers this evening who wished to comment on this item? Seeing no one in the chambers this evening, could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion?
Second?
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. The public hearing is closed. I will now open the floor to the Planning Commission to discuss. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Matt, I have one for you. I noted and mentioned to Commissioner Coon that there seem to be almost 50 open loops yet to be completed, according to the staff memorandum, before the project can really go forward. My question to you, and you know, it's your financial risk, do you see any significant showstoppers among those open loops?
No, we do not. We've been reviewing those for the past couple of weeks. Most of them are engineering-related technical detailing items, which we're actually in the process of resubmitting to the city probably by the end of the day tomorrow. So we have reviewed them. I don't see any showstoppers. Obviously, the well needs to be working, or we got to have water, you know? So that's something that we're waiting on some final details from Cara, which we expect. I spoke with her today. She said she should have some more information for us by Thursday this week. So we're aware of that and understand that that has to be satisfied to staff's satisfaction. So yeah, we're comfortable with the conditions. Okay?
What's the likelihood of well number six not getting completed or capable to serve this area?
Chair and Commissioner Pedersen, in relation to this project specifically, I'm not quite sure how to answer that, honestly. It depends on their construction schedule. As I mentioned in the report and the presentation tonight, it could slow their schedule. It could delay it. I don't anticipate that it would completely unravel their project, but final platte approvals are good for two years, I believe. So if they were to receive approval from City Council, they have two years to complete their infrastructure. So it provides a significant timeline for them.
Okay. I mean, those are the two things that jumped out at me as well. Number six, F, you know, we get the parts, we build it, it's all ready to go, and the DNR says, no, you can't do this here, or you've got to do something else different. You know, at the end of the day, you're probably going to be able to come up with an agreement and be able to work with them. I guess my only thing is why wasn't, or is it in progress for a traffic impact report to be done? That was the one that kind of jumped out at me as being, probably should get this done.
Commissioners, on that topic, we do have that in process. There's a little bit of a hold because we're working with the county on the final design of the county road. So that traffic study will be interlaced with that final design. So again, it's an item that we're aware of that we'll have completed to finalize the design of that county road and the intersections based on the traffic from our project and the project to our south. It's, I was just in for a sketch platte, I think, last week or week before.
I just had one question, Brian. I think there's several items in here that are like, the renderings appear to meet the requirement.
Mm-hmm.
But how do we ensure that they meet the requirement versus just the renderings? Can that, is that a, I don't think it's a condition on, because there's a lot of those items. How do you address that?
Sure. Chair and Commissioner Sikora, so that will likely be evaluated with building permits for the units, because the requirement for the townhome parkings is just to make sure that they have two enclosed spaces as well as two driveway spaces is essentially what the code is trying to say. So that will be up to staff's review at the building permit phase to verify that each unit has a two-stall garage as well as driveway space to accommodate that.
So most of the streets in here are private streets.
Correct. Just to highlight the streets again, so this street A here that they've labeled with the red, that is the only public road that is proposed in this development. That will be the Collector Road extending from Victoria Drive and going down south to the future commercial areas. Everything else they're showing is private drives.
And is there, at one time you had a pathway by the railroad tracks. Did that go away to connect the two neighborhoods, or?
Mr. Chairman, yes. We had shown that as a concept early on, and as we explored the safety of that in proximity to the road crossing, it was determined not to be advisable to put that there. We're endeavoring to get a quiet crossing approved as part of the county road improvements through there, and that surely wouldn't be a lot if there was a pedestrian crossing a couple hundred feet from it. So we had to remove that connection. We still do have, obviously, the connection along the county road to connect the two
Guess I have one other question. Two-to-one berm versus three-to-one berm. How many two-to-one berms do we have in the city? And does that just mean it's steeper and could erode faster, or is that, is it that big of a deal?
It's, to answer your question, I'm not sure how many we have existing in the city right now. I would venture we have a few of them. And then regarding the reduction in the slope, it's less steep?
A three-to-one is less steep than a two-to-one. But the idea with a three-to-one slope is it's supposed to be maintainable with a riding lawnmower. A two-to-one, you cannot put a riding lawnmower on it, but it's still, you consider it kind of unmaintained natural vegetation, but not overly steep where it should erode. It's similar to any min dot bridge abutment you'll see driving along any freeway. Those are all two-to-ones, you know, kind of coming into bridge areas. Those are just natural vegetation. So it's a similar situation to that. And I think there are several around town we've heard about. I don't know how to name which ones they are, but Cara was comfortable with our proposal there.
What's currently along County Road 11, like to the north?
As part of the Laketown development, I would guess that's also a two-to-one unmaintained slope. Drive past and notice it's a taller slope with some more vegetative growth. It's not frequently mowed, similar to what the applicant is proposing here this evening.
I guess consistency is what you'd want it to look like, I guess.
Good point.
Is there, is there any concern on your part based on the economy and some of the issues, and whether that will delay any sort of progress at all?
From our perspective, actually, it's a positive outlook. Interest rates are going down, which helps the project's financial feasibility, so that's a good thing. And there's just still a remaining high demand for rental and for sale housing, especially in Victoria. So we're not, we're not concerned about that.
Hearing no more discussion, can I get a motion?
I would move to recommend that the City Council approve the requested application for Victoria South with the, with the consideration of the topics that we discussed this evening. Traffic, trees, well, homeowners association, signage, and stuff like that's listed in there, but we didn't touch on them. But obviously, well number six being, is that a motion, or is that just bad?
All staff's recommendations, right?
All staff's recommendations. There we go.
All second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Our second and final item this evening is item 3.2, Discuss Local Regulations on Cannabis. I will now turn it over to Community and Economic Development Director Jen Bruington as Associate Planner Travis Beersley for staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. Tonight, we're going to, we're going to talk about cannabis ordinances. Just a little background on them. Retail cannabis is projected to be going into effect January 1st of next year. There's a few things that had to be done to get to that point, including the state establishing the Office of Cannabis Management. There's also a state statute, which is 342, which regulates all of the cannabis sales. There's also a rulemaking process that had to go through, which the state is still, or the Office of Cannabis Management is still finalizing after receiving comments from cities and counties throughout the state. What we need to look at is the local ordinance part of this entire process. With it in there with our local ordinances, we need to establish our ordinance, which includes definitions. The administration piece, which is also permitting enforcement. Currently, staff is working with the county on having, possibly having the county take over that role for us as well. There'll be more information on that once a lot of that stuff gets settled, a lot of that's depending on the rules being finalized. In addition, we should be looking at regulations and restrictions, the same we would with any other type of use in town, as well as any type of special permits. The big three things that staff is looking for feedback and discussion from the Planning Commission tonight include the zoning districts, which right now staff has identified as our central business district and our C1 and C2 zoning districts. We're looking at the hours of operation, and those hours would align with on and off-sale liquor establishments. So if you can go into a liquor store, you'd be able to purchase these products if a permit's been issued, the same thing with a bar, and only during those hours which alcohol can be sold. In addition to that, we also look at restricting distances for specific uses such as schools, daycares, public parks, other cannabis retail. And the staff perspective is those restrictions don't really fit with needing to put them into our ordinance because of how our non-residential districts are set up. In addition to that, we looked at, the final thing, which is a residential treatment facility restriction, which the state would give us a maximum of 500 feet as a minimum buffer. So with that, I would, staff would like to get some feedback from the Planning Commission on thoughts on cannabis regulations.
Thank you.
I know this is just really broad and, I'm trying to think what C1 and C2.
Chair, C1 and C2 are the proposed non-residential zonings that City Planner McCain has talked about and brought forward. Basically, you have commercial districts which are budding up or near residential, which are more for your neighborhood, small strip malls, your mom-and-pop type shops. And then you have your C2, which is more your large commercial. So that's going to be where you have fast food restaurants, or where you have a Target, or some of the larger type of retailers.
Now, would you include residential in this ordinance that I can't sell it out of my house?
Underneath the curtain, or underneath the proposal, this would be restricted just to the three non-commercial districts. I'm not sure if the state would issue a permit to sell out of your home. That'd be part of the rulemaking procedure that hasn't been finalized at this point.
So Chair and Commissioners, so really what we want is your feedback on where do you want a business, where do you want this to be allowed? So when you talk about your central business district, it's our current downtown, it's the future downtown west, and then you're talking about your commercial areas, which is more of your south growth. So we're talking today, where, meaning zoning, where do you want to allow these businesses, right? And then the operation piece, we want to restrict what time they can sell said product. And then do we want to keep these businesses, these operations, away from certain types of other businesses, like noted on the screen? So really, we want feedback on these three bullets as we start continuing to basically develop our ordinance here.
Let me make a recommendation. So don't we have, we have under the central business district, we have like allowed uses, and then we have uses that are permitted under special permission? And those are our conditional uses? And if it fit under a conditional use but otherwise restricted, so for example, I think in Denver-
So for example, I think in Denver, there's several cities in greater metro that just don't allow it. And so you'll be in a city through a pocket, there'll be no dispensaries, and those cities are happy with that decision because, I don't know, A, it's not taking the retail space of some other business that all people want to use. And we kind of like a liquor store, I guess, would be, or a bar. I think we had tattoo parlors fit under that in our conditional uses where we allowed it, but we didn't want three of them lined up in downtown Victoria. So I think that would be appropriate there. And then the neighborhood, commercial and community commercial, could they be conditional under those as well?
Commissioner, that's some great questions. Underneath the statutes, the city is required to allow at least one retail location for adult-use cannabis for every 12 and a half thousand residents. So up to 24,999, we have to allow at least one. And that's kind of in place.
We're not mandated to open one, but mandated to allow one in one of these three sections?
These are just the proposed sections, whatever zones we wanted. But yes, we have to allow it somewhere in the city. And if, and if a retailer came in and was able to get a permit from the state and they met our zoning regulations, we would have to permit it.
So as a conditional use, if we allowed it under a community commercial, for example, would that force the applicant to apply for that?
Correct.
In the community commercial?
Commissioner, yes, it would. Right now, one of the questions that have come up in a lot of the meetings with the state, with OCM, is doing just, just that, doing a conditional use permit. Part of their permitting process makes it really short, and so it's 30 days. And it'll take staff and the Planning Commission and council longer than 30 days to do a CUP. But that's something that we are having discussions, and other communities are pushing to get those timelines extended for approvals.
So this has been a hornet's nest of issues, and staff should be commended for thinking about this in advance. One thing I would note is that Min Stat 342.13 spells out local control options. And to some extent, our hands are tied. As Travis alluded to, we can only, we must issue one permit for every 12,500 residents. And I'm guessing we're getting close, if not above that, number of residents.
A little over 10 right now.
Soon. My input would be that we would probably, A, want to wait until OCM issues its model rules and regulations before we do anything but begin thinking through some of the tough issues. And two, think about the time, place, and manner restrictions that we want. For example, I would strongly recommend, not on the waterfront, that borders our beautiful downtown area because it attracts a lot of families. And I don't know that that's the sort of business that we would want featured as people come to visit downtown Victoria. Not, it's obviously a legal substance, but we wouldn't want a liquor store there necessarily either. And so I think that we should be careful about limiting the number of establishments to the extent we lawfully may, and then thinking carefully through time, place, and manner restrictions. One question I have is whether we could combine liquor licenses with cannabis licenses to minimize the number of establishments. I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't believe that we can, but we have, we, meaning myself and the other community development directors throughout the county, have been discussing this on how that licensing will work. My thoughts are council will feel the same way and wanting to be hands-off on that licensing process to exactly that point because we don't do liquor. So we're trying to figure out what is the best use of staff time and also the enforcement piece, right? So we won't have that option really either. We would like Carver County to take care of that. So to your point, Commissioner, you know, the time, place, and manner is really what we're looking for and the feedback from you tonight. And again, this is going to evolve a little bit more as we learn more, but we need a starting point. And we have to allow it somewhere. And I know that this first year to two years, they're doing a lottery system. So we could have, making this up, 10 applicants from the city of Victoria, and no one get a license because of the lottery system. So they're only allowing certain amount of businesses to open this first year to two years to kind of see how it goes. So we may not even see anything this first year. But we've got to be prepared when we get the green light to go and we've got people knocking on our door wanting to open businesses. And we need to be fair and equitable in how we prohibit these or allow these.
From, from my standpoint, reviewing the packet for the meeting, a C1 strip mall type of location would be if, you know, we, we will be doing this either sooner or later. But the, the ideal location from my point of view would be a strip mall type location versus certainly in the central business district. And, and certainly to community commercial, that seems not, you know, maybe an ice cream shop would be, would be appropriate. But, but I think in, and you know, one can name any one of, you know, the one on Highway 5, you know, for, for example, would, would be, would be where I would envision that something like that would go.
Can I ask a cannabis question that I probably should know the answer to? But can't companies sell cannabis right now? I mean, I can come up with four places I know that sell it in the city right now. I, I don't, I don't use it, so I'm not really sure.
Yeah, Commissioner, there are several variety of cannabis and cannabis-like products. So this, the statute more focuses at the flower version of cannabis. So what you typically think about, you think about people smoking cannabis. And then there's also CBD, there's cannabinoids, and there's low, low potency hemp edibles and all this other type of stuff. So when you hear Delta 8, Delta 9, gummy bears or whatnot, those are different types of products that have been regulated over the past several years underneath the Department of Health. That, all that regulatory stuff has now moved over to the Office of Cannabis Management, and it's being expanded to include flower and that type of product.
This is for smoking, more or less? Okay.
If some, if we have a conditional use under all three of those districts or those zoning districts, is it possible that somebody applies under one as a conditional use and the Planning Commission could deny it? And they could apply under one of the other two? And they ultimately get, would get approval under one, but we could deny it? You know what I mean? It gives you the ability to not decide really until you need to.
Commissioner, if we have a conditional use permit required for the retail operation or for any of the other type of businesses which are included in this, what happens, that conditional use permit makes it a permitted use, and the commission will only be able to put reasonable conditions for the operation on it, such if the hours were restricted more or if location orders and traffic and things like that. However, if they got denied in one district and chose to apply for a different district or a different location, as long as it was still permitted and even under CUP in our ordinance, we would have to entertain it.
I understand that, but so, for example, if somebody applied under the central business district and we did not approve that conditional use and recommended that they apply under the neighborhood commercial district, and then they could do that, and then we would approve it under our requirement? Do you see how I'm restricting their ability to get it in a place we don't want it? But maybe as the city grew, we would want that flexibility?
And, and Commissioner, that, that's a good point. And that's kind of why we're looking at where do we want it? If we wanted to not have the sale or the retail of it in our downtowns or we'd want it someplace else or vice versa, what we would do is we would set up our bulk standards for where everything can be, and we would say it's not permitted in the CBD, but it's permitted in C1 or C2. Or permitted with conditional use or however that would look. Staff does plan to bring a draft of the ordinance back to the Planning Commission, probably within the next few weeks to month or so.
We're still going to have county regulations that we're going to have to adhere to as well.
And state. I think about the class project that we just approved and all those 144, 144 units. If everybody decided to use cannabis and there were a handful of people that didn't like it, it would really be a burden for those people. So I'm guessing there will be more state regulations around use. We're talking about basically zoning requirements.
Talking about selling, not using.
Well, I think, I think Jen's approach to the earlier discussion was, what are other municipalities in Carver County doing? And, and certainly my, you know, my approach would be, rather than reinventing the wheel, let's take a look at what other, what other people are doing and either use, you know, use or delete, you know, things that they are doing. And I think there's a lot to be learned from there. I think, you know, I think the gathering of information, we have, we have some time to, you know, to truly get something firmed up. But, but gather the information from other, you know, I've heard, you know, from a variety of other different states what, what they're doing. And, you know, they, they asked me if it was a topic that, that was going to come up. And I said, yeah, sooner rather than later, I'm sure. And, and, you know, certainly other, other states have, have some experience that we could utilize at the, at the same time.
So Jen, so you guys are, staff's looking for, do we want it in the CB, Central Business District, C1 and C2? Or do we just want it in the central business district? Or do, that's what you're looking for us from tonight? Do you, do we want it, you know, for hours of operation? I think it should match on and off sale liquor. Restricted distances from, you know, it should be restricted from schools, daycares, treatment centers, all that. You know, it's just the zoning districts are, where do you want to allow it? And, and where don't you? And, and that's kind of the biggest question. But like right now, in the central business district, I know there's at least three that are already selling CBD products, or there were more, I don't know. I know of three I can think of off the top of my head.
But think of it as a dispensary.
Right, well, I know.
There's no dispensaries here.
Well, I know there's one that wants to be or has applied to be. And he's in, they're in the central business district. So that's, I guess, is the question for staff wants to know, do we want it, do we not? And if we say no, that in the central business district, but in the community commercial, or then it'll exclude some and, and so forth. And I guess that's what you're looking for from us is, you know, when you're writing the ordinance, do we write it, how do we write it? And if it's, and if we're not going to allow it in the central business district, then let's not spend time writing that portion.
Yep. If we were to do it in the, in the form of a resolution, I would certainly make a resolution that we would do C1 and C1 only.
But describe again, C2 and C1?
C1 would be more of your, your smaller neighborhoods with smaller stores, like your grocery store, your hardware store, right? Those smaller, like you mentioned, mom and pop shops. The C2 would be more where your Home Depot, your larger big box stores are, Boston Scientific. Like there's larger companies, a lot heavier traffic, you know, not like your downtown you're seeing. So.
Yeah. What would like, you know, there's, there's the, the place next to Cub that's a, like a vape shop, and then there's an MGM right next to it, and then there's the sporting, used sporting goods store. What would that be considered, do you think?
Chaska.
In Chaska, C1 or C2? 2?
I would have probably a C2.
C2?
See, I mean, I think we're getting into an area where you don't want to kind of prevent a decision on the other one.
Yeah. To me, we don't want to become the city of dispensaries. And so my view is that we should limit the number of licenses to the minimum required by law. And secondly, we should be careful. I, I don't know if the right answer is C1 and C2 or both. But either should be conditional uses, not permitted uses outright, so that at least we have some say as to time, place, and manner with respect to the resale.
Can you treat the permit as collectively under C1 or C2? I bet you could do that.
You can put it as a conditional use in either district.
Yeah, right. Some way for us to make a good choice when something comes up that we can have some insight on the benefit to our community.
Chair and Commissioner, one thing that we will be doing is that staff will be bringing back the non-residential, or the C1 and C2 bulk standards, I believe with the CBD and with industrial as well, or review a public hearing and potential adoption. So there'll be a little bit more insight with all the different type of uses that are there, as well as it's in the previous packet from the 20th. So there, it's not the easiest decision, but there is information out there. The biggest way to look at it is, do we want it downtown? Do we want it near neighborhoods? Or do we want it away from the neighborhoods as much as possible? So, and I do want to remind everybody, this is just for the retail sale. As far as consumption and things like that, that's handled through different methods.
Are there any other permits that are absolutely required like this, where the city has to approve at least one per X number of residents?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's wild.
Has a question about on and off sale. To me, those are two different things. On would be opened till 2:00 AM, off sale shuts down at 10 o'clock, right?
Commissioner, that's correct.
I would recommend off sale as opposed to on sale, just from the standpoint of, you know, you want people going to dispensary at 1:30 AM because they can.
And the idea behind it is, and we can certainly set a 10 o'clock limit on it. I believe that's within hours that the state's providing us for restrictions. If Vicks or Floyds or whoever wanted to be, were able to obtain a permit for the sale of the cannabis products, if their, their bars open until 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning and they have to stop sales at 10, it can become a regulatory challenge. But it is, it's a, it's a good point of discussion, and staff's had a lot of discussion about that just because it's a management piece.
Didn't the state say you can't sell both? Or am I wrong there?
There's no ruler statute that I've seen, Commissioner, that, that you can't sell both.
Why, why wouldn't we have a matched liquor store hours, not liquor sales hours?
Right.
And we could, we could do that as, is that more where you were going, Commissioner?
That's where I was going with it, but then you threw the curveball in. What if one of the existing establishments that is open till 2:00 AM gets a dispensary permit or a capability? Then we just have to shut them down at 10 o'clock at night?
Which is.
Becomes a difficult thing to manage.
For sure. I took it as a given that it would be no greater than the off-sale liquor sales hours.
Yeah.
Liquor store, yeah.
And then restrict, restricted distances. I think schools is smart. I think daycares is smart, maybe a little bit more challenging. City of lakes and parks, you might run into some. City of lakes and parks, you might run into some situations there, but, um, I think, I think the rest are fine. I think I would redline public parks out of there just because there are so many of them. And we aren't really sure what it's going to look like all over the place.
I think that would be probably to deter as much as possible. Probably enforcement would be a complete challenge. We ran into this with some other thing we were talking about on smoking or not.
Smoking and chewing and drinking and vaping and.
Yeah, and Commissioners, just so you're aware, uh, Carver County as a whole, I believe, is heading down the path of not allowing it in either public spaces or parks, which I believe council feels the same on that. We would probably just copy paste that.
Yeah.
Quite honest, um, which I think staff, you know, we support and we're fine with. Again, that enforcement piece would be out of our hands, but we would let the county and our CSO team deal with that when that time comes.
I mean, that's for using. I'm just thinking about where, if we say C1 conditional use permit, you can open up your dispensary and one of them opens up next to the new gas station going up in the Southern Growth District. Is that 500 feet from a park? Might be, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
Or you got thirteen and a half acres. I mean, something goes in, you know, a strip mall or whatever, retail area goes in there. And what's your park in the thirteen and a half acres? For future, you know, and then we're getting a ban shell down here, you know, that, how close is the ban shell to what distance, you know? We just have a lot of parks.
Well, I think.
Curly Locken is like.
I think this discussion highlights the importance of having local, um, control of the issue as opposed to devolving it even to the county level when it comes to, um, ordinances and zoning code enforcement. I think you can, you can probably share resources around enforcement. But I think these zoning decisions are, are really community-driven. And it is important, I think, that Victoria retain the control of the zoning of businesses, uh, especially one that carries as much controversy as perhaps cannabis does. It may not in 20 years, but right now it's a, it's a lightning rod.
I just think because we're throwing around proper names, the new CBD store, what is it called, Min something or other? That was the, yeah, I mean, that's within 500 feet of Curly Locken Park. They wouldn't be able to get a permit from us based on that, just, I think it is. It's close if it's not, but.
And Commissioner, Chair, one thing that's not in here that I'd like to point out is, uh, there's an advertising piece for signage for the sale of the product. In the, in the draft that staff's been working on, we do have restrictions, or we, we put in restrictions for that reason of if there's minors and things like that to displaying the sale of the product. Because we do have challenging with the number of parks that we have in town and, and with where our districts are. And we have a lot of open space recreational facilities.
Does that help?
It definitely helps.
And again, we'll be bringing this back to you. And we'll be looking at our market cities as well to see what they're doing, getting more feedback from just other colleagues and just paying attention to OCM and what they've got, um, working in the next few months here. So thank you for the feedback. I think this is a good start. Um, and yeah, you'll be seeing this again.
Sounds good. That concludes our discussion items this evening. Uh, moving on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda. Staff, do you have any miscellaneous items?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, you'll notice we have a new face on the commission this evening. We do have Jason Otto here. He will be our alternate number two, uh, since Matt had to step down from the role at the last meeting, I believe I mentioned in the miscellaneous, uh, section. So plan to see Jason at future meetings here. Make sure to stop and say hi to him, get to know him a little bit after the meeting this evening. Secondly, we are still planning on having our September 17th meeting. We do have two items for that agenda. Uh, the first one being, as Travis mentioned, we are officially moving forward with the public hearing, hearing for our ordinances related to signs, fences, commercial districts, uh, all that stuff that we reviewed last time. City Council, uh, reviewed that at their last meeting. It didn't have any major concern, so we're moving forward with formal adoption. And then secondly, we have a variance to Carver County's septic standards, which Travis will be leading, uh, with some technical support from Carver County on that item. And then if you watch the council meeting on Monday, you'll know that the Victoria commercial proposal for the gas station is a quick trip. I don't know if you all had heard that, but I thought that would be notable, notable information for you all to know. And then lastly, we have a second company in town starting their fiber installation, MidCo. You'll see them around town. We do have another webpage devoted to this. So we have a separate MetroNet page and a separate MidCo page under the Streets Projects portion of our website. So, uh, that's all from staff.
Thank you. Commissioners, any miscellaneous items?
Any other, uh, comments on Highway five? After the presentation?
Chair is here. Yes, Commissioner, good question. So, um, we had a great turnout at the open house. Over 300 people showed up. So, um, we got to show a lot of the staging and just get feedback from more neighbors and, um, just show construction process, things like that. It is updated on the Carver County website. So all of the meeting information will be on there. So if you'd like, we can send out a link to where that is located. But I highly recommend following their page, following their social media, get, get the email updates. They do a good job of sending out information to residents. Um, along with myself, I send out information to business owners and property owners just on what's going on, what's the updates. But I wouldn't say anything earth-shattering news, anything new. Um, I would just recommend following that page for, for the updates on that. Uh, but staging and construction dates are getting finalized shortly, which is exciting.
Thank you.
Well, since there's no more items for tonight, this evening, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a motion, give you a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, the motion carries, we are adjourned.